Start the March 13th meeting of the Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is agenda changes. Does anyone have any agenda changes? Okay, second item is public comments for non-agenda items. Since there is no public, I expect there are no public comments.
Ah, well, there's that. Nope. So, so third is John Kadash's update on discussion with the Recreation Committee. So, Commission, so why don't we flip that with Agenda Number Four? Does that?
Sure, makes sense since John is still on the room.
John's not here. So, Agenda Item Four is fiscal considerations for the official map, which is essentially what is, what is it going to cost and how are we going to, how are we going to pay for it for these, for the spaces that we've set aside on the official map?
Yeah, so Maggie and I talked about having this on the agenda in part because of John's efforts to reach out to the Rec. Commission, and so when he gets here, we can talk more about that. And I talked with Jen McQ, our Rec. Coordinator, after that meeting to see how it went, and she said it went well, and all the commissioners were there except one, and they, you know, took the materials and listened intently. But she did mention, that was, that was a question that seemed to be hovering in the room, was wow, this is really ambitious. There's a lot of recreation areas indicated on the official map. How, how are we ever going to pay for that? And I know that we haven't really talked about that too much through the discussion. It's more been about where, where should, you know, the community reserve some spaces, and how big, and what could possibly be there. So, I explained to Jen that, that it's, that there are lots of, there are lots of ways to, to, to figure that out. It's not, it's not just going to be hold more bake sales and hope for another natural gas line to go through town and give us a bunch of money, like what happened with the Bisnet Rec. Fields. And, but I thought it would be good to, to talk about it amongst you, just so that you're all on the same, at least you're all on the same page, and so that maybe at the next meeting, when you're having a hearing, if the issue comes up, you can tell folks, we understand, and here are some thoughts, and that sort of thing. So, as most of you know, especially since we just had town meeting, every year, the Select Board prepares a budget, an operating budget for the next upcoming fiscal year, and the voters review it and vote on it. In addition to that, what some people are not as familiar with is that every year, the Select Board reviews the capital budget and capital improvement plan. And they do that in conjunction with, but actually separate from, the annual budget. And, and what that is, the annual budget is your spending for the next fiscal year, from July 1st to June 30th. What the capital budget is, is your anticipated spending on capital items over the next five years. And it doesn't commit you to that, but it's a way for the town to, to sort of look forward and say, these are big-ticket spending items, and we think in the next five years, we're going to spend money on, on these items. And typically, a capital budget will indicate what the item is, what department it falls within, how much we think it's going to cost total, and where the funding is going to come from. If it's all going to come from the next annual budget through property taxes, if it's going to come from a mixture of grants from the state, for example, highway paving is something that we, we plan in the capital budget. Most of that is paid for by highway grants we get from the state every year. Or if it's going to come from some other source, like impact fees on new development, that sort of thing. The capital, so that's capital budget. The Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, is, looks beyond that five-year period, and tries to look at all of the capital items that we, as a municipality, think we're going to have to spend money on, maybe over the next 10, 20, 30 years, and talks about each of them, talks about approximately when we might be replacing that item, or spending money on that item, and if we have an idea where the money would come from to do that. And so, the Capital Improvement Plan is a longer sort of laundry list. What's published every year, together with the Town Report, is the capital budget. And I think it's, I think it's the, for the next five years. I know that it, I know that at the back of the Town Report, it shows the, the capital items that are planned to be, we're spending money on in that annual budget, you know, which items are being spent on that year. But the public doesn't really see the Capital Improvement Plan, that much longer-term sort of laundry list of spending items, as much as they see the annual budget and the capital budget. So, it's through those short-term and long-term budgeting techniques that, that the Select Board sort of gets a handle of these things. And, and part of that process that Renee's office, the Town Administrator's office, helps them with, is to run charts and graphs on, you know, what our debt load is. How much have we borrowed, and what are we paying back, and how that's going to change over the next 20 or 30 years, based on anticipated spending and current bond, our loans that we have out. And in that way, hopefully, the Select Board can be cognizant of trying to spread out when we take loans on things, so that we don't, we don't increase our debt load more than we should in a particular period of time. So, that, that's a short explanation of capital budgeting. Now, much of what's in the capital budget and in the Capital Improvement Plan are items that we have a really good handle on. Highway trucks. We know how long they last. We know what our cycle is for replacing them, and we buy them regularly, so we have a good handle on how they work. Fire trucks, police cruisers, and to some extent, some building issues, like roofs and furnaces and things like that. Also, the new police station, which we're paying a loan back for the next 27 years or so. But what, what is not so much in those documents are these more speculative municipal facilities, a lot of which you see on the official map. So, the sidewalk, for example, that we did a feasibility study on and had a lot of public input on in the last few years, that is on the official map, the draft that you've prepared, that would go up the Richmond Road. We know it's a two-plus-million-dollar project, and, you know, we know that it's possible, but it's going to, you know, require some real work, and, and we're not sure where the money's going to come from. It, we don't, that's not included in the capital budget, because we don't, we're not planning on doing it in the next five years, and, and if we did, we're not sure how we'd pay for it. I don't think, it's also not in the Capital Improvement Plan, because I'm not sure why it's not in there. Maybe the Select Board just hasn't thought about it yet and, and decided to add it. Certainly, the new items that you've included on this proposed official map revision aren't there either. So, the Overlook Park on the Blumstrom property, you know, above NRG that we proposed on the new official map, we don't have a cost estimate for what, what that would be. Similarly, the, the new sort of park area on the Quinn property that we anticipate being adjacent to the cemetery, and sort of helping be the center, or be a real public facility within a larger neighborhood that would one day develop there. We don't know what that would cost. And so, I think Joe has been pretty clear in these discussions that, that the town ought to start planning fiscally for these facilities, and set up capital budget items or reserve funds, that we start putting some money aside. I think it's also important that, you know, this get, if this gets forwarded to the Select Board, that gets forwarded with a recommendation that these items be added to the Capital Improvement Plan, even if it's, you know, 20 years out, or 10 years out, and that we consider what, you know, some ballpark cost estimates might be to accomplish at least some of what the, the potential uses are within those areas. That's difficult, you know, without a, a formal study and weighing of scenarios, and what types of improvements, and land valuation. That can be tough. But I think it makes sense to encourage the Select Board to take a stab at it, and, and then, you know, follow that up in our budgeting documents.
So, if we write a letter to the Select Board recommending this, can we recommend that they just do a blanket, you know, set aside money for community facilities on the Town Map, or do we have to name them all?
That's a good question. I think-
The general fund versus a-
Exactly.
I think that from a savings standpoint-
Because, because we don't, we don't know what's going to be-
Right.
-developed first, because we, you know, it depends on whether these properties, even if they're under development.
So, I think there are, there are two different questions there, Maggie. From the standpoint of, does the town, so right now, for example, the town puts money in a, like a sidewalk reserve fund every year. And I think this last town meeting, they bumped it up a bit. It was a little higher, because they wanted some, some work done on this Richmond Road sidewalk, sort of pre-planning. So, that money, it gets approved in the annual budget, and then it doesn't necessarily get spent, but it's, it's squirreled away and accounted for. I think that it would make sense to recommend the Select Board considers beginning to set some money aside for future community facilities, as indicated on the official map, and that, and that sort of reserve account, whatever you might call it, would then be available for any of them, any of the facilities on the map, not, you know, this one versus that one. But if, if they thought that that was a good idea and did that, I think it would still be important, within the Capital Improvement Plan, to list each of these, these community facilities separately, with some sort of a ballpark cost estimate, or the statement that we don't know. You know, that the estimate is to be determined at a later date, but it's in the plan, because we anticipate that we will be seeing that be developed when development happens there, or, or subsequent to development happening there. And, and so those are two different things. You know, one is a, is an accounting of all these things we intend to spend money on in the future, and the other is a savings account with a balance in it, that we can tap if we want to leverage a grant, or, you know, start to do some planning for one of these areas. Both of which, I think, as Joe indicated from our, our experience with the Act 250 review of, of the Hanford Project, would help make the case that the town is proactively planning for these areas, and is serious about doing something with them, even though the final decision about whether to do those things hasn't actually been made yet.
Alex, is that the, the line item that was in the budget, I think it was Land Preservation Fund? Is that what this would be?
No, the Land Preservation Fund is separate, and we've had it for a very long time. That fund is, is sort of, well, decisions about it are made by the Select Board, but recommendations as to its use are made by the Conservation Commission, and it's intended for just what you would think, more traditional conservation easements, or purchase of, of lands, forest, farm, those sorts of things. I think this would be, this would be something separate, in the same way that we, we have a sidewalk reserve, you know, we might have a, a official map, or village area infrastructure reserve, and, and we could plunk some money in that, if the Select Board felt it made sense, on an annual basis, and allow it to sort of grow over time.
Well, I thought they were, they were supposed to do that a couple of years ago.
No, there's been talk at the Select Board meetings about wanting to establish a capital sort of reserve, and, and the discussions that I participated in, in the years prior, last year or so, actually revolved a lot around this building and some of our other buildings, and the desire not to see deferred maintenance build up over time, and that it would be good for us to understand what kinds of improvements we need to make in our current infrastructure, like our current sidewalks, our current buildings, and maybe put some money aside every year to help pay for the inevitable repairs, whether it's a, this, the roof on this building, for example, has some issues, and we may need to do work on it, and it's not going to be cheap, because it's a slate roof. And so, they've been talking about maybe putting aside money for those sorts of things, and I, I don't know whether they're thinking about having targeted funds. I, I don't think they are. I think they're thinking about a, a general sort of reserve account that could be tapped for whether it was the police station, or the, or this building, or the pump station that, you know, required some maintenance. Go ahead.
I was of the impression that the Bisnet, one that's not developed yet, the Quinn one, the Plow and Stand one, would be-
The responsibility of the developers, and something that would be mediated or negotiated with at the time the developments are done.
So, that's not the case. What the official map does is, and, and we've had some of this conversation while you were away, so-
Okay, sorry.
So, I can clarify. What the official map does is indicate the town's desire to, that there's, we have an interest in this particular spot, for this particular use. Doesn't obligate us, doesn't mean the landowner can't do something with it, but it means if they want to do something in that area development-wise, we need to have a conversation. It, it doesn't obligate either the developer or the town to build anything there.
Correct.
The developer, for example, in most of these cases, in the past, has said, oh, I see you want a road here, be it the developer of the Kenny Drugs development, I see you want a future road here, I'm going to, I'm going to leave a swath of land, and maybe deed you a right of way for that. But we didn't require that the road be built, and, and we weren't on the hook to build the road either at that point. What the, what the companion set of regulation revisions to the official map proposal is doing, these public open space regulation revisions, that will require that developers actually build a certain amount of public open space, but it's a small amount. It's not meant to be, you have to build whatever we indicate on the official map.
Right.
It's meant to be, you have to build a reasonable amount of open space, and if it coincides with an official map element on your property, feel free to build it there. But if you don't have an official map element, you know, you're still going to build some green space, and it's, it will result in a, in a relatively small amount, whereas some of these official map designations are many acres in size. So, no, ultimately, how we pay to improve these areas on the official map is what we're talking about, because it's yet to be determined.
I mean, it could go any number of ways.
Right, exactly.
You know, one of the ways that's very possible is that, that the town would, you know, negotiate with the landowner, purchase the land, and, and do the development itself. You know, that's-
But it's highly unlikely that any of this will get done unless those areas get developed, don't you think?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, let's be sensible.
I think the way that you've designed these elements is, many of the new ones are in places that are meant to be, help be the center or focus a new development area, and it would be odd to build them out ahead of time. With that said, what I told Jen, and she wasn't aware of this, so, so I think it's important to point out to people, I think a lot of people want new development to, to sort of pay their way, and if we're, if we're setting aside these various areas, because we see a larger village, and the new development demands, you know, more public open space, then that new development should be on the hook to pay for it. Well, there are ways to make that happen. Special Assessment Districts is one way to do it. Another way is through impact fees, and we collect impact fees today for police and fire. We don't have a recreation impact fee, other towns do. And unlike the police and fire impact fees, where the new development, as calculated in the, in that fee structure, are only contributing their fair share towards the new police station, new development's not the reason why we built a new police station, so that new development isn't paying 100% of the cost of that new police station. Existing taxpayers are paying most of that. New development's paying a small portion. But on this issue, I think you could argue that these official map areas that you've delineated are in fact 100% needed because of the anticipated new development.
Yeah.
Impact fees could be constructed to pay for 100% of the cost of, of the town building out those public spaces, you know, in coordination with whatever the developers decide to do on their own. Now, that will require the Select Board to understand what the cost is going to be to develop these open spaces, and then, you know, arrive at an impact fee that's defensible, and has a calculation, so we know what to charge when new houses go up. So, there, there does need to be that level of sort of pre-fiscal knowledge and planning, in order to collect those monies from new development via an impact fee. You, you don't necessarily need to do that pre-fiscal planning, if you collect that money in other ways, like a special assessment district. If, for example, the, the official map element in the Village Northwest District, where the Haystack Crossing Development Proposal is, if, if the Select Board said, yeah, we, we don't really want to do an impact fee, there are some issues with impact fees. One of them is, you have to, once you collect the money, you have to spend it within six years. Otherwise, people can ask for it back, and municipalities oftentimes don't work at that pace. It takes us a lot longer to get things done. So, if the Select Board said, we're not going to do impact fees, but we will, we do want that new development to pay 100% of the cost, they could impose a special assessment on that district, and said, any new development in this district is going to pay their normal property tax, and an extra X amount, you know, every year to pay for these improvements. That's another option.
So, that's a, that's a post-development-
Could be, yeah. They could set that up before or after, yeah. And that might be more flexible, you know, and, and might be more fair, in a way, that, you know, we actually understand better what's needed in there. So, there are a number of ways to do it. Obviously, we always seek grants, and so we could make, try to make assumptions about how much money we could leverage from state and federal grant sources for some of these places. But those are usually competitive and never assured, so it's difficult to count on those. And then, of course, there's property taxes. And, and some communities go, go into the realm of, of tax increment financing. I don't know if any of you remember or heard of that concept. It's, to try to explain it simply is difficult, but it's essentially the, the concept of the property has a certain value today, undeveloped, in, in a, in an area that you're planning for development, it has a certain value today. Once it's developed, its value is much larger. And the increment, the difference between those two values, is, is additional value that you can tax, that the, your property taxes recognize. And so, TIF districts are areas where you set up to say, that increment, that we're going to see an increase in value, we're going to recapture the property taxes from just that increment, and use them to reinvest in that district for infrastructure, to help make it all possible there. We're not going to send those property taxes into the general fund, and so that's another way to try to harvest new revenue from a particular area that's seeing new development. And it's, it's used very effectively in, in several communities in the state, that have gone through the state's process to approve not only the return of, of the revenue from that increment, increased increment of municipal taxes, but also of the statewide property tax, which is where most of the property tax money flows, is into the education fund for, you know, through the statewide property tax. That's a very attractive way to let municipalities recapture some of that increased value that, that new development is, is making happen. Unfortunately, the legislature has been very stingy about allowing municipalities to, to harvest that statewide property tax, and there are no more TIF districts authorized at the moment. We, we hit a max, and the legislature said, no more. You have to sort of get an act of the legislature to get a new one, and so it's, it's difficult to do that. But we do collect municipal taxes, and there is the, there is the possibility of using the same TIF idea, just within the small slice of municipal taxes. So, that's a more complicated way to sort of have development and its increased valuation pay for infrastructure within that area, but it, it is another one that could be explored.
But don't we also incentivize them to do some of this stuff? Through, I don't know, bonuses with density-
Yes, sure.
-or water allocation, or whatever else, which, you know what I mean? And then they're, okay.
Absolutely. And the new, as you know, this allocation, this new allocation system that this committee that Jeff has been serving on, is proposing to the Select Board, is, is to try to add more incentives. You want water and wastewater? Well, if you provide some more public infrastructure, you'll get, you'll be higher on the priority list. But unfortunately, we, in Heinsberg thus far, in our zoning regs, and in this allocation system that, that is being proposed, we like to give people choice. And so, yes, if you want bonuses, you're going to have to do some additional stuff. It's not necessarily the building of public infrastructure.
Correct.
They could be providing affordable housing, they could be doing green building, they could be creating jobs. All of these things could get them bonuses in lieu of actually building any of that public infrastructure. So, it's hard to know, you know, just how much of that is going to be built out through incentives.
So, how do the sidewalks come into play with that? They just decide to do it for a bonus, or are we regulatory-
Well, sidewalks are, sidewalks are a good, are a good example of one that we probably only need to worry about certain areas on the official map. Many of the sidewalks that we show will be built by the new development, as a requirement of, of them developing, because our zoning regulations say you have to have pedestrian accessibility, and so the sidewalks are going to have to be built. But in some areas that, those, we call for sidewalks where there isn't going to be any new development, and that's going to be on us to fund. And regardless of whether a new development is going to put in a new road that we show on our map, or a new sidewalk, there is the question of, of operation and maintenance costs, long-term, i.e. forever. And, and those typically become the responsibility of the town, as soon as we take over those roads and sidewalks. And so, from a budgeting standpoint, it, it was, it would be good for us as a community to know sort of what we're getting future generations into, in terms of, do, are we going to need a new sidewalk plow? Because one doesn't cut the mustard during the winter, once we have, you know, another mile or two of sidewalks. Similar with highway equipment and the like. And so those are all, I think, recommendations that you could, you could give to the Select Board, if and when you deliver this whole package to them, to say, there are a lot of fiscal implications, and, and you, Select Board, are the, are the budgeting sort of fiscal body of the town, and we'd love you to think through some of these things, and maybe here are some ideas.
The towns are trying to get away from, 100% from doing sidewalks. Burlington has discussed that.
Well, I know Essex, for example, has, has taken out some, some sidewalks on streets that have them on both sides, low-traffic residential neighborhoods that, that they deemed didn't need a sidewalk on both sides of the street.
But I'm talking about the maintenance of it.
Sure. Well-
Because it's so costly.
It, it is costly, but I, but I would tell you that as a Burlington resident now, that the investment they make in sidewalk maintenance, especially just snow plowing, is, is robust. You know, they're not, they're not backing off of-
No, they've just talked about it and heard-
-plowing sidewalks. They, they, they do, they do a good job, but it's-
Yeah, right.
It's, it's significant.
This is the only, Vermont's the only place I've ever been that plows your sidewalks.
Right, and a lot of other places-
You're required by law to clear the sidewalk in front of your house-
In front of your property.
-or else it's on you.
I've heard that.
There are places, however, where even in communities like that, or states like that, where there must be a municipal entity that does some level of it, because, because of conflicts with road equipment, highway equipment, where the average person with a shovel literally can't, can't clear the sidewalk, or you're on a stretch of road where there is no, there are no houses, and there's still a sidewalk. But, yeah, and in fact, that's in Vermont statute. I just, I was happened to be reading some section of it a few weeks back, and noticed that Select Boards do have the power to compel property owners to clear sidewalks along their frontage. But that's not been the practice, you know, for sure.
Alex, to go back about five minutes ago, when you, you spoke of a special assessment on new development, would that be an ongoing assessment, or is it a one-time thing? Again, I was thinking ahead to maintenance-
Yeah, it's, it's typically a, an ongoing special assessment for a certain number of years, until the investment is paid off. So, if, for example, this neighborhood needed, I'll, I'll give you an example that's not Heinsberg. So, let's say that a particular neighborhood has a, a water and sewer issue, and there's a pump station there that, that pumps their sewer to the main treatment plant, and the pump station goes down, and it needs to be significantly upgraded. You could establish a special assessment district within that neighborhood, so that neighborhood pays for that improvement. And, and the idea would be, each year when you pay your taxes, you're going to pay a little bit extra until that cost is paid off. I don't know that there are many communities that have special assessments for ongoing operation and maintenance costs. You do sometimes see that in communities where the town has split from the, the, an incorporated village, and part of the reason is because the village has a lot of infrastructure costs, and so they have a different taxation rate as a result. But that's, that's not really what you're talking- But that's, that's not really what you're talking about or what I was talking about. So it's usually for those capital items that happen to be specific to a neighborhood.
Let's see, um, Alex, um, like, um, you know, many towns have not just a list, like you were talking about, those capital and-
Capital Improvement Plan.
But there's also funding mechanisms, um. You know, I know Huntington, say, for example, they have an annual set aside that goes into a conservation, come, preservation fund.
Yeah.
It's, uh, I'm, I'm assuming most of those monies come from, uh, property tax. It's a small percentage, but-
Right. Well, like Heinsberg, Heinsberg has that same land, land preservation fund. Yep.
And those monies are used for, uh, land conservation?
It depends on the community. So, uh, yeah, here in Heinsberg, they're typically used, uh, uh, again, the recommendations are made by the Conservation Commission to the select board to use that money for, to help. It, it's, rarely is there enough money in that fund to actually buy any property or buy conservation easement. But there might be some, enough money in that fund to, uh, provide the necessary local match to leverage a grant or perhaps to pay for a survey to be done or perhaps to pay for closing costs i- in a transaction. Um, or just to be a slice of a more complicated funding that, uh, mix, you know, that makes a project go. Here in Heinsberg, we have, we, we've had the experience both of that, which is a land preservation fund that we add money to on an annual basis, although not always-
A fixed amount?
Uh, yeah.
And is it discretionary from year to year?
It's discretionary from year to year and for several years, we didn't put anything into it. Um, so it definitely varies. Other towns, um, well, actually in Heinsberg, in the past, we've also had special, uh, requests at town meeting or special articles for a particular project. So the, the La Platte Headwaters project, I think, is a good example where, um, the, the land preservation fund had a certain balance. Um, the project was mature and had lots of different funding sources, but there wa- there was a gap. And so the project came in, you know, the project coordinators came in and said, we'd like to ask the town taxpayers for, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars, and, which was a big ask, and the voters said yes. And, and that was, that was pretty impressive at that time. Other communities have, um, uh, a fixed amount per, you know, per, uh, annual budget cycle. Or they might have a certain, uh, penny on the tax rate, uh, that's dedicated to that particular use. Burlington does a lot of that.
Yeah, Charlotte.
Charlotte does. Shelburne doesn't. It's funny, I've been meeting with, um, several communities or several municipalities from the southern Chittenden County on a regional conservation partnership. And I always thought Shelburne, for example, had that sort of dedicated penny on the tax rate, but they don't. Uh, and so they have to every year propose a number. Um, it's usually a heck of a lot bigger than our number, but, uh-
To what extent, I mean, like it used to be the state Vermont, what was that, um, affordable housing and cons- land conservation, it's an entity-
Vermont Housing and Conservation Board.
Um, a percentage of any real estate deal-
Yes.
Uh, that, any real estate transaction in the state of Vermont. It was, I think-
The transfer, the transfer.
Yeah, the property transfer taxes.
The transfer, part of the transfer.
Part of that's dedicated to-
It was modest, but at various times that fund built up pretty-
And we've successfully leveraged that fund on most of the conservation projects that have happened in town.
We can get access to that.
It's competitive.
Yeah.
And you have to apply and it's not, you know, there are other, there are other, sometimes other priorities. But yeah, it's, it exists and it's, it's, it's a model for the rest of the country and actually the world. We've had folks from other countries come to Vermont to hear about the, that fund. In part because it, it, it provides money not just for land preservation, but also for affordable housing and, and the fact that it does both is pretty special. But to say that Heinsberg can count on that funding source to help pay for anything we designate on the official map, probably not. Uh, it's not, those funds aren't designed to pay for bocce courts and a, you know, gazebo. Um, they're designed to pay for more traditional, um, farm, farmland conservation, forest conservation and, and affordable housing.
One thing that that fund also functions for, the land trust has used this in the past. It demonstrates a local government commitment to a particular project. It may only be a thousand dollars, but it is a marker and it says the town government supports this project so that when the land trust has then gone for other sources, they can, we can say, this is something the town wants to do. So it's an important, uh, piece, even though it can be a small amount of a total project cost.
Right. So I think hav- having money in our land preservation fund allows us to, to do that.
Demonstrate that.
Having a similar fund for capital improvement purposes would, I think, serve a similar aim. You know, show that we're serious, show that we have some money to leverage other grant funding um, and provide a seed, uh, for whatever it is we think we need to do financially in the future.
So we've talked about different ways of funding these, um, you know, what's, what's on the official map, but ultimately it's the select board's decision, how to, how to do that. So we're, we're just making the recommendation that they put this on the capital fund.
Yeah, that's, that's for you to decide what kind of a recommendation you'd like to make. I'm, I'm giving you a spiel here. You can, you can accept whatever of it you want or tweak it. Um, I will tell you that, uh, in statute, the planning commission is called out as, as, um, as an entity that, that is supposed to be able to comment on the capital budget. Uh, and it, it just varies by community as to whether, uh, you know, the planning commission has any involvement in it or, or whether the select board, you know, takes, takes the reins. Here in Heinsberg, ever since I've been here anyways, the planning commission has never really commented, uh, on the capital budget.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. So, but in other communities, the capital budget actually starts with the planning commission. Each year when it's, when updates are being made, starts with the planning commission. They make a recommendation to the select board. Um, I think here, we've had some spotty record of, of doing capital budgeting, but, but since we've been more serious about it, the select board has, has felt like it's their role. And so they've sort of taken on that responsibility. But my point is only that, given that statutory reference, you as a commission should feel empowered to, to make recommendations about the capital budget, uh, specific or general, you know?
Well, I, I guess, um, I'm not well-versed in this, but it seems to me that, um, you know, when, when we go to this length, you know, draft seven here now, most of what's on this official map is, uh, designated open space to be used in some, you know, public, for some public purpose. It's not exclusively the case, but that's the predominant, you know, globs of orange on this map. And it seems to me that a combination, not that we can necessarily tell the select board, hey, these are the funding mechanisms that you should use, but it seems to me, um, if there is some equity between the notion of impact fees and becoming more sophisticated about that process. I mean, currently, you know, it's for fire and police, as I understand it. I think our community's recreational needs, especially as they relate to open space, should be on an equal level, um, with those services. It's, it's a service that the community provides. And then in turn, if we use an impact fee of some kind, uh, to commit to being able to do those recreational improvements, that the other side of it is, um, you know, a fairly, easy to say this, you know, but a fairly, um, fixed approach to, um, you know, a, a public contribution to such a fund, you know, on an annual basis, that's, you know, well, you're about to deal with this issue, Jeff. Way to go, man. You know, uh, it, it's, you know what I mean? It's sort of like both sides. Okay, uh, development entity comes to this community and, um, they're participating and helping fund and likewise, especially for those areas that are for the community as a whole, it seems to me that a combination of impact fees and just an annual set aside, uh, for these long-term improvements as they relate to what we're putting on the official map seems like an equitable balance, how that all works and how it, you know, do you just- I think Huntington actually just, I was impressed and I may be wrong in the numbers that I heard, but they set aside like sixty thousand dollars a year for land preservation. Or, or the, the, the improvements of, um, publicly owned lands, whether it's, it sounds like a lot to me.
I'd be shocked if it was that much in Huntington.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I think Shelburne is like seventy-five.
Okay.
Um, but who knows?
And maybe, maybe I'm, I'm way off base, but that's the number that I heard and I thought, goodness gracious.
That kind of number building over a number of years is-
Well, that's it. I mean, it's like our own personal bank accounts, you know, um.
Well, what I would say is that, um, as planners, we all understand that, um, that planning happens first and upfront and that it usually includes cost. And so if the, if the, if your mission or your goal is to have the new development in the areas of the village growth area pay for the necessary public improvements that are shown on the official map, at least most of them, um, it, it, it probably makes sense for the existing taxpayers to help fund the planning for those areas to happen so that it can all happen properly. You know what I mean? And, and that's where I think you have, uh, at least three legs in a multi-leg stool. You, you have the existing taxpayers who are committed to setting aside a bit of money each year to help with planning studies or analyses or what, seed money for grants. Uh, you have the developers who are going to be potentially building portions of it. You know, this new zoning regulation will require them to build small areas. Um, and that's Jeff, as Jeff said, they may build more as a function of getting incentives and bonuses. Uh, and then you have the new development that they create paying the lion's share of the actual cost to install these facilities.
Yeah, and ongoing.
Well, then, then the question just becomes, how much can we leverage grants so everybody doesn't have to pay as much? But then, and what do you do about the on- the ongoing operation and maintenance costs and who's going to pay for those?
Yeah.
And I, in my, in my estimation, it's easy for me to say, I don't pay taxes here. I just work here. Um, once those facilities are built, e- e- even though they were needed because of new development, they are open to the public. Everyone in the community will potentially benefit from those areas. It seems like everyone in the community ought to help pay for, you know, the repair of a swing set every five years when one breaks.
But wasn't our, our budget, you guys, this last go around, I'm trying to remember the actual number, but I thought it was two point nine, was it three million? Non, non-educational.
Right, the municipal budget.
The municipal budget was three million dollars.
Thereabouts.
And in that amount was an item of thirty thousand dollars. Is thirty thousand one percent of three million?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, the notion of setting aside one percent of our annual budget for non-educational purposes to a cause such as this, accumulating over time, again, easy to say, but we're lobbying one guy here anyway, um, seems like a prudent thing to do. That thirty thousand was something, say, for example, we put into social services, such as it is, you know, Heinsberg Community Resources, but also other-
All the donations that get made under that article.
The Howard Center, you know, typically, um.
Yeah, well, ultimately, the, the, I think that the select board and the voters will decide um, how much to put aside on any kind of annual basis.
And as soon as those funds build, of course, then they become a really tempting target in sort of hard times, which is also something to contend with and deal with perhaps proactively, but.
Alex, where does the building permit fees go to, that money?
Into the general fund.
It does?
So just like, um, speeding ticket revenue, revenue from speeding tickets and overweight, uh, violations, um, and zoning permit fees, uh, those all go into the general fund. So, um, I, I think even the recreation department, which is largely self-funded-
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's a hundred percent. It might be a hundred percent self-funded, but I don't think those dollars are segregated. You know, I think they, those are jet, those are revenues that go in and then there are expenditures that come out and, you know, you can look at any particular line item, but, um, impact fees are the only, one, one of the only revenue sources that are segregated and can only be used for the completion of capital projects that those fees were collected for.
Of which, it's my understanding, just to be the devil's advocate, those fees are more than the building permit, than the permit fee, say, for instance, if you're building a house.
They, they can be, yeah.
Do complain about that.
Yeah, they, they can be.
You know, I'm not saying I'm complaining.
The impact fees are more.
Yeah, they're more than what the building permit fee is and I, I, people from other towns have just said to me that we're very high compared to other towns. I don't know if that's true or not, with the two combined. I don't know.
I don't think it is, but every town has a different complement of impact fees. Some towns have, still have school impact fees. I believe Williston still does. They, when CBU was expanded, they updated their school impact fee to help new development pay for that expansion, which we're all still paying for. Um, we don't have that impact fee, so new development in Heinsberg isn't. But I think when you look at the, at least when we did, this was several years ago, but when we looked at surrounding other communities and their total impact fee, we were not, we were not that high because we only have the two.
Right.
But you're right, yes. The fire impact fee, the fire impact fee in particular generates a fair amount of revenue and, and, uh, that's, that's the bulk of the impact fee cost when people build. Uh, and that's because we, we, it, we have a capital budget item for a, a fire station expansion and a new truck. And both of those are kind of pricey, so the impact fees are similarly high.
I mean, I'm basically in favor of that, everything and what you said. Um, I think that's good. Um, because my feelings are, you want to come to Heinsberg and develop or you want to come here to live? You're going to have to pay.
Yeah, yeah, seems fair.
You know, I think at that point, it's very fair.
Uh-huh.
I think when you, yeah, it's hard. For the people who live here, like you were saying, well, they should pay too. Sometimes I think it's harder to put that on them.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
It's harder at the same, at the same time. I understand what Alex is saying. If I, if I stare at the official map, right, and, and look at, look at some of these areas, like, you know, thirty-three. Well, I mean, there's, there's, there's not a lot of development residential around thirty-three, but, you know, that's, that's a community asset. Thirty-one and thirty-two, you know, I would expect that to get used by people that drive their kids to the Bisnet Rec area to play soccer as well. So, so that's a wider community use. Why wouldn't, you know, the larger community maintain that?
No, I'm not saying I would get, you know, I'm just sharing a lot of talk that I've heard from people. When I worked here, I would hear a lot about that, so.
I would say, I, you know, I, I, it's probably not our expertise or, you know, to say, and here's how you pick people's pockets to get the money to do this, you know? Uh, we don't really know how to do that. But I guess it's appropriate and maybe just assumed that, um, for this and, um, other planning objectives to have credence, um, if our community does not, um, support those things with some kind of financial, uh, gesture, then it's totally erodes, uh, um, our inclination to do this in the first place and we're wasting our time.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that and in, in, you know, other, other people's ability to take us seriously is what I really learned before the Act Two Fifty Commission, that we need, you know, beyond the official map, even though the official map statute doesn't talk about, you know, capital improvement funds and, and, and all those things. It really behooves us to do that, both from a, a, a standing point of view, right? And a common sense point of view. So I, you know, I think it's well within reason as well as well within our power to, you know, if and when we send this to the select board, say, but again, you know, think about a way to fund this. We'd recommend, you know, some means of, you know, building a fund, you know, to, um, to put money aside for, for purchase, for development. You know, it can be, you know, added to in a number of different ways, right? It can be, you know, added to in a number of different ways, right? Um, you know, I, I certainly think impact fees and assessment are, are a reasonable thing. I mean, some of these areas we would not build out, right, without the development in there. Others we would. Um, you know?
I think it's sort of like the first step that was made, which I remember, like John said, years ago, when it first started with the conservation committee and you asked for five thousand dollars or something, I think, that's my recollection and it was a big deal and there was a lot of discussion at town meeting about it, but it eventually passed.
When the land trust started, we asked for funding for the land trust, not for a particular project at that time. And there was a lot of discussion about were we duplicating other sources that would be used to do the same thing and we had to explain, no, this is particularly for sort of startup things, the appraisals, the surveys, the assessments, the, the, that kind of thing is what that money goes through and there's a lot more that has to be put into it to actually complete the project. But it's, it's a real marker that says the town thinks this is a good project. At, at my understanding, Alex, maybe you talked about this earlier before I got here, there needs to be a capital improvement project defined in order for there to be an impact fee for that. You can't just say, let's have one. You, you've gotta have a defined project like a fire truck or whatever. And right now, none of that exists for anything other than police and fire.
There are a few other things that are in the capital budget that we could base other impact fees on, but, but nothing on the official map, yeah.
At this scale.
Yeah. You're absolutely right. It, the capital budgeting piece must be there in order for you to have a, a, a valid impact fee.
So if we want to encourage the select board to support this, we're basically saying you need to come up with a capital project to, to tie this to you, the select board. I mean, they may turn around to us and say, well, you help us do that.
They might ask the, they might ask the town assessor to, uh, say, here's five different parcels the planning commission thinks the town might want to acquire someday. Tell us what they're, what they're worth. We should at least be planning to purchase them, you know, and put that in there as, uh, and then the actual improvement of those properties are gonna cost additional funds, but maybe, maybe it's as simple as knowing how much the land is worth first.
Yeah, and even generically, you could put improvement costs to most of these parcels. I, I don't think it's rocket science.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't know what you all think, but I, um, I know that the rec commission, so we skipped over your update to talk about financing, but we'll go, we'll go back, right Maggie? But I think that, um, part of the rec commission's, uh, reaction to, to their discussion with John was, boy, you've done an awful lot of work on these Bisnet Rec fields and they were very, they're very expensive, you know, putting those fields in and the road to access them and all of that jazz. I'm not convinced that, that these facilities will be of a similar magnitude. You know, and I could see them starting as green space and evolving into playsets and bocce courts and, you know, benches and trees and, yeah, and not necessarily, you know, acres and acres of flat, well-drained rec fields with parking lots and all that. Yeah, not to say there won't, there won't be a cost associated, but maybe knowing what the purchase price or the vet, the land valuation is, 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 uh, plus a, plus a percentage on top of that is a good place to start.
Yeah.
So Alex, are you comfortable, um, preparing a letter, a draft, a letter for us to take a look at?
In my head, but I wanted to talk to you guys about it and.
Do you need any, any more direction from us?
Well, I see Jeff made a bunch of notes there, I'm kinda curious why he was writing.
Just copy his notes.
Did you want, did you wanna, did you wanna say something Jeff or, no, okay, fine. Yeah, my thought was that if you're, if, if, if all of this makes some amount of sense to you and you wanna make a recommendation on the fiscal side of this, this planning document, then after your hearing at your next meeting, depending on what kind of feedback you get, I'll, I'll draft that up, um, so you can review it at one of your April meetings before you forward anything.
I think it's also worth adding maybe, uh, and I don't know how this plays out, but, you know, watching the activity and, you know, like probably lots of people, some funding support for it, watching the whole Bisnet, uh, field activity, you know, what role the town has played in that financially, I don't know about, you know.
I just investigated that.
And I think that, um,
Not very much, do I?
Much as we, um, might encourage, you know, whether it's impact fees, you know, various level sources somehow facilitating that process of public support, you know, overt public support, just people who are interested in making improvements beyond their property taxes or impact fees or anything else, but just how one creates a sort of a receiving entity that, um, makes it graceful for people to say.
Yeah, maybe perhaps donate.
Exactly.
Like the gentleman that gave so much money to the library years ago, which was a total windfall.
Yeah, but there's a tendency sometime, I guess this is where I was going, was that, um, projects become, you know, a little like the library, a little like the Bisnet fields, they're either all privately funded with some pride sometimes and have nothing to do with any support from, you know, or at least capital support. And somehow melding those in some way, in a constructively, um, makes it a broader sort of community endeavor. You know, rather than just sort of saying, yeah, and, you know, aren't those guys terrific? They funded all of that themselves without any support from the broader community? Well, there's a side to me that sort of says, well, yeah, but that's not fair either, you know? There're gonna be all sorts of kids playing over there that, um, maybe had nothing to do with making a finance, maybe they couldn't afford it, so there's, there's certainly. But I, I think the intertwinement of those, if that's a word, um.
It is now.
I hope it turns out, 'cause I don't know. If you go over to the Bisnet fields, like my son plays soccer over there, it's really nice. The view and everything, and I hope that when it gets done, that that will spark people to say, we want more than that. But the other converse side of that is, well, you publicly, you know, you privately funded that, privately fund everything else, I don't wanna pay for it.
Well, that's the.
Right, and that's the, the middle thing.
That's why you're saying getting, finding the middle ground's important. And, and I, I totally agree Ralph, the Tom air is, it made no bones about the fact that this needed to happen, this net rec fields, that the community was long overdue um, to have that kind of facility, but that it would be funded through private dollars, not taxpayer dollars. And I remember at the time thinking, oh, please Tom, don't say that, you know, this is a big project of taxpayers are probably gonna have to, you know, there's gonna need to be community support. And to his credit, kind of made it happen without that. But it wouldn't have happened without that major windfall from the gas line coming through and that was unexpected money. And so I think you can almost look at that as a community public support, you know, and.
Plus, all the fundraisers that they did were supported by the community.
Right, just not the, not the general taxpayer, just specific people who chose to, to make those contributions.
But it was a lot of people in the community.
Yeah, and that's why they should get huge credit, um, but it was also, it's also a lot of work.
Definitely.
And to have to do that for every public facility would, wouldn't work, wouldn't work. You want a sidewalk here, let's, you know, have, have another concert or something.
Maybe perhaps Ralph can speak to this. I, I think you were, have been working a little on a community center, haven't you, or a senior center? I mean, didn't you have a little?
We're having chats.
So you're, you're getting an idea of how much, I mean, it's a lot, it is a lot of work and you just sometimes hope that somebody might donate. And that's always my hope, because I've seen it happen some.
Well, sure, it happened with the Bisnet, right?
And it happened with the library.
Both with the land being donated by the Bisnet family and a lot of people forget the, the Eddie family donated the seed money.
Oh, right.
Forget exactly how much it was, sixty thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars worth of funds to ninety thousand, yeah.
And somebody gave money out here for where the park is, so that the house could be torn down next door, that was right out here. I don't know how that, I mean, there's been more of that than we always think of immediately.
Yeah.
But that's pie in the sky, I guess, which we're thinking.
Well, why don't we, um, why don't we, uh, move on, give John a, a few minutes, um, before we do our video viewing?
Okay.
John, if you want.
I, I apologize for not being here when the meeting started. But I have to say, and, and this is my busy schedule, even though I'm retired, I, there are many things going on. I look in the newspaper this evening, the, the local newspaper, the record, for the time of our meeting. It's shown as seven thirty. And it's shown as ending at eight thirty.
What, what?
In the record, where they list what is happening each day, that's how it's recorded, so.
Can I fix that?
Maybe, I don't know whether that becomes your job or
I'm happy to.
My job to call them and say, you've got the time wrong.
Alex, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Thanks, Maggie.
Anyway, that's a lame excuse.
All right, moving on.
How many times have I been at this meeting already and I couldn't remember whether it was seven or seven thirty? Uh, the, the meeting with the, the rec committee, I thought went very well. They were totally prepared. Uh, Alex arranged to have this map and, uh, the description of all the individual parcels, uh, reproduced so that all of them had, had that sitting on the table when, when we met. Everyone was there. It's a seven-person committee. There's one empty seat right now. Everyone was there except for Kyle Bostwick. I gave a, a brief description of what we're working on right now, particularly relevant items for the rec committee. Uh, but I did show them this overall map and including the addition, uh, all the way up to, to, uh, North Road. Uh, and I talked about, in particular, I tried to explain to them the difference between these orange areas that require the developer to set that aside, but not develop them, and other requirements for open space within any one of these, uh, development areas that the, that the developer does have to improve. And we're looking at, we, the planning commission are looking at, maybe the developer can do that development within the land that they have to set aside as a way to get things started there. There was not a lot of discussion back. This kind of, uh, they all kind of sat back and saying, wow, there's a lot of information here. And I have to agree with them, particularly if you look at the old, the current, uh, official map, this has got a lot more density to it, particularly when you put together the, the sheet, which just talks about individual pieces. One of their comments was, this is a lot of space to take care of, what we were just talking about. Once this is set aside, and there's the issue of how it gets developed, but then how does it get taken care of on the, for the long term? So that was one of their concerns. Uh, another, a couple of interesting comments rather than concerns. They cautioned about having good agreements with developers in terms of setting aside land and developing the other pieces of open space that we require. And they pointed to the land behind Creekside, between Creekside and, uh, the LaPlatte, where there was plans for, uh, rec facilities and it turned out that there couldn't be. At least Frank Turog felt they had been kind of, uh, gamed on that. Uh, I didn't get that impression when you have described how the Corps in fact said, no, you can't use that land for that use, and that that was the reason that it was not done. But he, he seemed to think, uh, we didn't have a good agreement with the developer and as a result, they were able to get out of it. So he cautioned about that.
John, I, I just wanna put a fine point on one thing. That, to me, the, the official map, and, and I read the statute, that doesn't, doesn't require developer to set aside a piece of land. What, what it does, right, is, is mark out a parcel or a piece of a parcel, right, as a town interest for future town infrastructure. And if the developer wants to develop that, then that's a, you know, that's a point of discussion before the, the Development Review Board, right? And it, it can go multiple ways. It's not an edict to developer that, that he can't do anything with that land, right? It could be that, you know, the town ends up buying that land. It's not, you know, it, it, it's not solely an onus on the developer and I, I really gotta make that distinction because otherwise it looks like something this is not.
One of the other comments was, is it possible, and I had realized before I went into this meeting, there was a, a missing piece, there could be considered a missing piece on, on our official map, particularly in terms of trails. The question came, is it possible to have some of these trails coordinated with the vast trails that pass through town, particularly the ones that are along the LaPlatte Headwaters Town Forest and that edge of, uh, the, the village area? Would it be possible to work together, both public and private, to develop those? Their argument was, uh, the, uh, the vast people build bridges, they maintain the trails. They promote the use of the trails. My answer to that was, it, it's something that you can bring to the town to discuss. There's nothing that we've discussed in our meetings about, uh, integrating the vast trails in this map.
They need to speak with the trails committee, I think.
They have to talk, I said, you need to coordinate with the trails committee. I think you definitely have to bring the whole idea to the select board as to whether or not these are compatible uses. I mean, walking on the trail is one thing, riding a snowmobile is another thing.
Yeah, those don't seem compatible to me.
Go together, uh, but that was, that was a question they, they had.
Part of the catamoule aligns itself with vast trails and those areas are very hard to ski.
Yeah, right, right. So I didn't try to give them an answer one way or the other, but there's more discussion that has to go on about that. That pretty much constituted our, our discussion. They did not have a lot of feedback right that, at that time. I came away from it feeling that this kind of, uh, review with particularly some of the other committees and commissions in town would be good for, uh, the planning commission to do on a regular basis, to check in with these other groups that are talking about and planning for facilities that we in fact, uh, include in, in our planning, so that the, the Village Steering Committee would be kept up to date, that the Trails Committee would be kept up to date, the Rec Committee would be kept up to date. The, uh, what used to be the Financial Committee, the Economic Development Committee, which now has a new name, which seems to have shifted what they do from trying to bring it, development in, to simply receiving proposals and, and, uh, evaluating them. So I'd, I'd like to encourage the select board, uh, to, to ask the planning commission to set up a, a process where maybe four times a year, we meet with each, one of us meets with each of these, uh, critical committees and, and gives them an update and asks them for feedback. So that, that's kind of how I came out after this meeting, thinking that would be the next step, a next step.
I think that's a really good idea. The frequency, you know, is discussable, but I would think even the library, I mean, you know, for us to sometimes knowledgeably do these sorts of things, I think talking with, and I like your idea of just, hey, it doesn't need to be two full boards, it can be just uh, an individual that either comes to talk to us or we go and speak with them.
Yeah.
But that there's a kind of regular.
Yeah, it's possible that each one of us could adopt a, a different, you know, a, a town committee and, and.
a town committee and attend a meeting once or twice.
I think if you look at all the committees in town, there's something like 18 of them. But some of them are things that we directly have to interact with. The Cemetery Committee, the committee that deals with questions of assessment.
Good idea.
Things, committees like that don't have to be included, but there's kind of a core group of maybe eight or so committees that I think it would be good to stay in touch. And I'd be glad to do that with other committees.
We certainly had, you know, joint meetings of DRB and Planning Commission. You know, we've brought representatives of Energy Commission, et cetera, and when we're talking about town plan, but no regular check-ins.
Yeah. So that's pretty much it.
Thanks, John.
Should I get the popcorn?
Yes.
I forgot to get the speaker, so I need to run upstairs so that we can hear in addition to see.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
Oh, no, that's more like.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Good luck.
It's always designed.
I will support you.
You would listen to us planning.
Oh, to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, to all of us.
Kind of.
What I ask most of you is, you know, be thoughtful in finding replacements for those of us who leave the board.
It sounded a lot like what you set out.
It was, yeah.
Lockability.
I'm gonna still leave you that one, I'm gonna go find somebody.
Well, there should be a, there's, for Planning Commission, I think for Planning Commission, DRB, there should be a pool of candidates. And I know DRB has had a hard time coming up with alternates, but, you know, just.
I called with Catherine Goldsmith today to go to a workshop. They are, they still exist, the Village Steering Committee.
Yeah.
It's still Mike Boucher, Owee Sumukuku, Catherine Goldsmith, and now Nathan Frye. But they haven't, they haven't met since Nathan was appointed, and they need to do that, and Catherine knows that. And so they just, they just need to, the intention is to reformulate and start again.
And re-clarify their mission.
Yeah. So the hope is, they will, they will, they will take steps to reactivate now that they have a fourth member in a quorum.
Maybe Select Board can encourage them to do that.
Any of us can. Requires them to take some action, though, you know? But that's how it stands. So on your agenda, next, we have viewing of TED Talk. TED stands for Technology, Entertainment, and Design. It's a, I explain it in my email packet, but for the viewing audience, if anybody's watching and they don't know what a TED Talk is, it's a little bit of a phenomenon that's been around for a decade plus. And they are short inspirational talks given around the world in various venues that are recorded and then made available on the TED website. And they, their talks are on those three central issues, technology, entertainment, design. And they, like I said, they tend to be 18 minutes or less. They tend to be somewhat inspirational and sometimes a bit revelatory. And so Maggie and I scoured, and Ralph, I think, had suggested some previously, you know, scoured the website for talks that were related to some of the conversations that you've been having and that you hope to have about additional village area design standards, design elements, that sort of thing. And this was a talk that seemed good. There isn't a talk that's designed specifically for rural Vermont, so, you know, don't expect that.
Needs to be one.
Yeah, it'd be nice. Maybe one of you will give one one day. But many of these relate to urban places, but there are still lessons to be learned. So here's one of them. It is 13 minutes long. Maybe we can, well, I'll make it fullscreen. We can decide whether to hit the lights or not. So first of all, apologies for the resolution. I don't understand why it was quite so fuzzy. It's not that way if you go listen to a TED Talk on your computer at home. And.
What, what do you button, like on that gear?
Yeah, that's a good question. I wanted to play with that, but I didn't want to stop the presentation, so. I did change the speed. There is a button on the website where you can listen to these at double time if you want, because you're, you know, in a rush at lunch.
Yeah, and it hurts.
You can still listen to them, they just sound a little funny. Anyway, yes, they do sound like chipmunks. So that speaker, for Kate's benefit perhaps, if I go back to the presentation. His name is up on the screen, along with the title of his, title of his talk.
Is he from Vancouver?
I don't know, but clearly the talk was happening in Vancouver. Yeah.
I mean, that's why it appealed to me, because I, you know, that's, you know, what I keep thinking about in the development that we know is coming and the homogeneity that comes with it. When instead of, you know, incremental, year-by-year change of architectural styles, whatnot, these developments come in all at once. And, you know, we talk about the cookie gutter houses and the vinyl villages and, and there's nothing there that says, you know, Vermont, much less Heinsburg. It's, you know, his comment about evoking the local. You know, how could, you know, how could we, with our regulations, how could we encourage, you know, more inspired, you know, I don't know what, architectural details or, you know, how can we encourage that, other than, you know, token fake front porches or? I don't know, I mean, I, but I think the value in that, you know, as we walk in the, walk in the village and see the varied styles and.
Yeah. I mean, you can encourage it, or you can prescribe it. So the example that I'm thinking of, it, you know, lends itself to interesting architecture, and at the same time blends what happened 200 years ago to what happened now is a place like Nantucket. So you want to build on Nantucket, and, you know, they give you a book. And it's basically regulations of, you know, here are the different characters. Oh, by the way, we don't want the same character, you know, three residences in a row. It's prescribing everything from roof lines to porches to window ratios in spacing, to fencing, to, you know, in order to get this, you know, this feeling that you're, I don't know, that you're in an interesting and kind of cohesive environment.
You should bring that book in. Do you have it?
We actually don't have it.
Building with Nantucket in Mind is the name of the book. And you arrived, I designed a skating rink in Nantucket.
Yeah.
Talk about the anti-Nantucket-sized building, you know? And whoa, you know? And it sat next to the local high school and, you know, it begs the question, a lot of those examples that he shows there, I mean, you start with scale. That's almost what you start with, you know? And scale that is familiar to you within the community or region that you live in. You know, just about all those buildings that he illustrated there, whether it was Mongolia or other places.
Yeah.
Yeah, they mostly are two stories, three stories. Some of them were a little lumpier, like some of our big Victorian houses. They could easily accommodate, you know, several families. But as he said at the outset, that's not sort of what we're economically set up to build anymore, you know? And after a while, the population becomes anesthetized, you know, to sort of those very things that, that's a harsh thing for me to say, but I think that's what happens. That, you know, we don't recognize those things that were perhaps so lovingly made and people felt such great affection for it, you know? I don't know, I can blather on about this if you want.
I wish I had that book. It was loaned to me when I built our house.
I have the book, I'll bring it, I'll bring it. It's, that was the first thing the Planning Commission there gave me. "Ralph, you're doing a skating rink here."
Here's the rules.
Here's the rules. It's the only white cedar shingled skating rink in the United States.
White, not gray?
Well, it's gray now, but white cedar was the species of wood. This is really good, I think. What do you guys, you know? And there are like so many of these, you know, whether it's making towns or urban spaces, it's, they're not all necessarily good. But there's an awful lot of really pretty interesting ones. We do this at my office. Once a month, we have a TED Lunch, and they show four or five of these. And, you know, they're not all designed by any means. Some of them are just outright cheeky and fun. But it's, you know, I was sitting here when we were watching, and I was saying to myself, gee, wouldn't it be fun? Every two-hour meeting that we have, we take 10 minutes and do one of these, you know?
Yeah.
You know?
It was interesting, as he mentioned, the local, all the places he showed, everything was stone or concrete. And I was thinking, oh, that wouldn't work here, but the location, it was appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the little housing project in Chile maybe was wood, but I think you're right. A lot of different materials that, you know, come from that area.
But as he mentioned, not, you know, looking back, but not in a nostalgic way. And even, well, I'd have to see the rulebook for Nantucket, but, but, you know, sort of taking a building material or a style and sort of architects going with it, you know, running with it and being creative with it, not necessarily, you know, rigid, you know, just copying.
Don't be so literal, yeah.
Yeah.
So one of my things is, I like it, but how do we?
Make it happen. You know what I mean? When you've got developers that want to build boxes because it's cheap and they're going to get their biggest profit margin out of it. And we can say, okay, you grow so far and so, but how do we get them to, you know, without getting super prescriptive, how do we get them to do good design? You know, and that's always been the hurdle for me, is how do you incentivize them or regulate or something and, you know, do something different? How do we, how do we make that happen? I think is the challenge.
I mean, without being super prescriptive, you're limited. But if you take things like, you know, village design standards, so we've talked about some of those, we've talked more on the open space side lately and what's required, but, you know, if you were to specify things like, well, you know, I want, I want the ability to, you know, house a, you know, have a housing unit where housing was on the second floor and, you know, the first floor could either be used as a business or part of the residence, right, so you have, you know, cellphone, business encouragement, or you just dealt with style and structure and, you know, I want, you know, I want slope roofs, I want, you know, the slope to be, you know, at least X reminiscent, I want a mix of materials. Not specify what those materials are, but you're basically just, you know, regulating against homogeneity. You're going to get more of a mix. Now, some of the things he talks about are more difficult, like the issue of fire stairs. You get to a certain height, you're going to need fire stairs. That's not a town decision. That's a, you know, that's a bigger fire code, an insurance decision.
Well, I look at, you know, I use the word scale, and I guess what I mean by scale is sort of, hey, yeah, the overall readable size of a building, you know? Whether it's taller or shorter or wider or fatter or, you know? I do think a lot starts there. If you get that, you know, somewhat proportional to most of what surrounds it, then there's a kind of comfort level, you know? Quite obviously, if you stuck a 20-story building in a residential neighborhood of two-story. Quite obviously, if you stuck a 20 story building in a residential neighborhood of two story houses, you can see the incongruity or whatever that word is. Um, so I think the scale is one thing. And that translates directly into some of what this commission before me had done, which is to, in an intelligent way, limit the footprint size of a building, you know? And maybe it's not quite as stiff and inflexible as we currently do it because we currently say, well, buildings in that area of town, you know, I, I don't even know exactly what the real estate at this point, I'm sorry to say. But, you know, I think that limit for most of our village growth area is 20,000 square feet. Well, you could, um, argue successfully that occasionally a use comes along, uh, say like NRG or whatever today's cheese plant would be, that merits some kind of exception, you know? Um, given the satisfaction of some other things. But do we want that building size to predominate in a particular neighborhood? I would doubt it, but maybe one 20,000 square foot building or whatever that size is in amongst a lot of other things that are friendlier in scale, say for example, merits some attention, you know? Um, and then you get into issues like Joe's talking about form, you know? The roof, the materials, the details. Those, those more often than not, I think, reflect the standards that the consumers expect. You know, I, I think that, um, it's, it's sort of upping the expectation as much as sort of saying thou shalt do this, you know? Uh, that perhaps works more effectively than, you know? And, and I, I think the analogies he uses are pretty good ones. I mean, I think, um, we've risen to that point when it comes to food consumption or beer. Um, but we don't seem to have, uh, similar expectations when it comes to the individuality of our housing accommodation uniformly across the population, you know?
I mean, it seems that developers have, you know, they have a little playbook of three, maybe four houses or they'll switch a garage over on the other side or, you know, do a gable a little differently or, um, you know, shingles on, you know, a different type of, it's still vinyl, but, you know, shingles as opposed to whatever.
I would say that, you know, to, to your point or, or against your point, that consumers have been, been trained on what to expect, right?
That's what I think.
I said anesthetized.
Over time.
Anesthetized is good.
Right, so, so, so it, it, it's not always the consumer dictating the, the, the look and feel because they've, you know, they've been indoctrinated and, you know, over time. It, I, I think, you know, from, from the community's point of view, if, if you really want, you know, real variance and interest in, I mean, I think you need to, um, suggest it, to encourage it, to, you know, to regulate it. I, I, you know, I don't know what the total answer is, but, um, you know, left to their own devices, I, I think there's a convergence of the mundane.
I think you're totally right. And I think a lot of it has to do with economics.
Yeah.
You know, which I don't, I don't know that much about buildings, so, but maybe you can do things like we saw reasonably. Who knows? I don't know that, you know?
Yeah, what kind of struck me at the end of the pitch was it's the same basic building that he was showing.
Exactly.
You know, but, but it was being character adapted to a certain situation. Kind of some of the, you know, some of the same basic things that probably dictate cost, like that center stairwell.
Right.
Well, I look sometimes too, you know, things where e- even things that are quite, uh, vinylized or whatever that word is, you know, like, um, probably if you look carefully at the architecture of some of the things that have been made in our community more recently, say the last 20, 30, 40 years, one might say, wow, shucks, you know? By comparison with that nice Victorian and the details on it down the street, it's somewhat pale, you know? But when you look at the community as a whole, you come from Charlotte in this direction and you look at the kind of townscape, um, that Green Street sort of profiled against those houses in the back. Not bad. Uh, you look at Creekside in a similar vein, you know, when you, I mean, individually, you could say, well, these aren't, at least not yet, uh, they don't feel like particularly special architectural pieces, but as a community. And that's what I guess I mean by scale. The scale of those buildings over here don't differ too terribly much from those Victorian, uh, Italian aid buildings that stand in the background. The same is true with Creekside. You know, they're two story structures, they're reasonably well sized. Uh, you can imagine trees growing in that neighborhood and over time Thistle Hill's sort of the same. So I think there's a lot of things that, uh, at least as far as residential neighborhoods, um, that they aren't so bad, you know?
Well, let's, let's, let's hold these thoughts for, um, for when we start our discussion of, the, um, architectural standards and design standards. And if anyone have, has ideas, dot them down, bring them, bring them back for those, those discussions. Um, okay, I wanted to move on so we can all get out of here by nine o'clock. Um, so, uh, let's have a look at the minutes for the 13th.
There's only one thing I, I noticed. Yeah, I think it might've just been a typo. Yeah. The public hearing is, was to be March 13th or?
It, it was originally.
Okay, maybe that was it.
Where exactly did you?
Oh, boy.
Oh, the last paragraph on pa-, or page three before it begins, planning commission. Um, maybe just a editorial comment brackets that. Any other comments or changes on, on the minutes? Does anyone have a motion?
I finally got to say it.
What?
To, uh, oh, yeah. I got so much to learn.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Well, we might have to do it again next. We do? All right.
Yeah, counting you, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, so let's move on to other business and talking specifically about our hearing on the 27th.
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't intend for this to be a discussion item as much as just an FYI. The materials, the hard copy are on the table. Feel free to pick up a packet. It's a public hearing. I think most or all of you have been involved in public hearings before. So, um, I'm happy to make an, an intro at the hearing to sort of kick it off. If one of you would rather do that, I'm happy to defer. But the, the purpose of the hearing is to get comments and to, and allow the public to drive the discussion. So usually it's a whole lot of you listening and explaining and answering questions.
Will we have it down here?
Yes. I don't anticipate a huge audience, so I think down here should be fine.
Okay. Um, schedule anything else for that date or is that it?
Um, I would recommend just that. And if by chance it's a small turnout and there are very few questions or comments, um, you know, you could, you could close the hearing and discuss the comments you received and how you'd like to make additional changes to reflect feedback you've gotten and, you know, final marching orders for me to prepare the packet kind of a thing. Inevitably, people do show up and you respect their comments and engage in discussion and it soaks up the whole meeting. And then we need the next meeting to actually contemplate what to do with all that, but.
Okay.
And after that next meeting, let's say that happens, the next step is to decide to make a recommendation to the select board?
Yeah, I think, uh, in the, in the easiest case scenario, uh, if there are very few comments or just accolades, uh, at the, at the hearing, you would, you would, uh, make any final revisions if you thought any were necessary and then give me, you know, pass a motion to forward the proposal to the select board and give me marching orders to, you know, do that.
And then they hold it?
And then the select board will receive it and they'll get a briefing at one of their meetings and then they'll talk about it before they decide whether they want to make some revisions before they hold their public hearing on a final version. Uh, but assuming that you do get feedback, I have gotten an email from at least one landowner, um, with, with some concern about the official map. Uh, so assuming you do get some of that next time, then, uh, I could foresee you discussing it next time and then using your first meeting in April to decide on any final revisions. If they're minor, then it could be forwarded on then. If they require more work, it might, you might hit the pause button for a few weeks to get things fixed or to reconsider something. It's always hard to know at public hearings, just depends what the public, what, what they say and whether it warrants action.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, and folks, as usual, we'll get back to you if anyone can't make the hearing, but, I mean, it's, you will.
March 27th?
27th.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
All right. All right. Any other last minute other business or correspondence?
I was, uh, just going to say that, um, uh, last year, we started a little group. I'd say there's maybe 30 on the email chain at this point. Uh, it's been done before, but discussions about the creation of some kind of community center. It's kind of long-term planning, I might say. One of the things that we're doing, um, several people got together and put together at least the rudiments of a survey questionnaire that asks people questions about community resources of different kinds and their desired availability, things like that. It's actually fairly lengthy, but I probably would guess that not any of us really have a extensive amount of knowledge about how to put together a survey really. So I don't know, Alex, I was going to bother you at some point. You might have some words of advice for how to structure this thing. I, I think it's an educational tool for the planning commission too, possibly.
Very much so.
So, um, kind of stay tuned. That is going on, we meet from time to time. Whether anything comes of it, hard to say.
You, you mentioned, Alex, that the Survey Monkey license that you have?
So we, we have, the town pays for through the planning and zoning department, a, a license with Survey Monkey, the online, one of the online survey software tools. Uh, so it makes, I'm, I'm always encouraging folks, if you want committees, if you'd like to do a survey, I'm, I'm here to help and I, I can, you know, make that happen without too much fuss or bother. And, and it's nice because it's, um, it, it provides analytics and, uh, sort of the ready display of the results without having to do much work. Uh, and it provides, uh, a web link so that all those things are easily available to the public later on and, and stays, stays up on their site and makes it easy. So if you decide you're going to do, want to do a survey, I'm happy to help.
Yeah. Sarah Mc, Sarah Armstrong Donigan? Do I have it all right in sequence?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, she's actually one of the ones that was cooking on this questionnaire. So she's, I don't know if she's technically a town employee, but, you know, um, I, I think availing ourselves of you and that Survey Monkey thing, I like the sounds of that.
Yeah, just know it's available. And I'm, I don't claim to be a survey expert, but because this commission has done community surveys in the past, I have some sense of how to put a survey together and what kinds of, how not to word a question or what kinds of questions are difficult to get interpretable results.
There are techniques.
Yeah, open-ended questions that sometimes are, uh, yeah, even if you're not leading, sometimes you ask too many open-ended questions and you get lots of great answers, but you can't summarize them and so anyways, yeah, I'm happy to help.
They have templates on there too.
So you know kind of the type of survey you want to do? It'll give you like examples of questions and then you can tune it for your own question, but it still has that sort of how to summarize it without being open-ended?
I think we're just trying to determine, you know, what's important to the town, but what's important in the whole area of, uh, community resource and.
Well, it's interesting, the, the link that you sent to the, uh, about the civic infrastructure, talked about doing an inventory of what's available and what's, what's needed. So, um, I think, you know, having a, having it right out front will be incredibly helpful.
I mean, part of this was spurred this time around with this noise about, uh, you know, water on the Black Rock site and the fact that, um, there might be some action there potentially. Um, and that one of the earlier components is a fairly substantial housing project for senior citizens, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then you start thinking about, uh, you know, some kind of community facility that serves not necessarily just the elderly. We've also got the Bissinette Playfields down the way. So there's a, there, there might be a, a specific opportunity in conjunction with some of that development that might say, hey, something might happen there. On the other hand, you've probably also heard that the fire department is thinking of moving out of their building across the way. Whether that's something that's a good idea or not, I don't really know. But it begs the question, others have said, hey, let's do something constructive with law one. Um, there's a side to you that sort of says, well, maybe we ought to look at the fire station and turn it into some community resource. Maybe not, maybe it ought to be some commercial development.
Let's start the conversation.
So this is really just trying to start that conversation, I guess. On a smaller scale, we're also kind of looking at the Vestry building down the street here, which is only about 1,200 square feet, not really a facility that you'd say, hey, would serve multiple numbers of people and whether it's viable, it's pretty postage size lot and the building's in pretty rough shape. We've kind of been looking at that, the United Church owns it.
I thought they were going to tear that down.
Well, I think the church, the church was at a point where, yeah, they, they do want to tear it down and we sort of jumped into the middle of it and said, hey, let us exhaust other possibilities before you.
Well, they'd actually have, had an offer to buy it from somebody who wanted to re, rehab it and had gotten permission from the diocese and, um, and.
The church?
Yeah, and to do, to do, because he was going to lift it up and redo the foundation and whatnot. Um, but the United Church, I guess, is kind of run by committees and they took two years and didn't do anything, they didn't cover the roof, water was just leaking in and out.
Yeah, bad.
The window, which was, you know, saving that window, which came from the old, was the congregational?
Or Baptist church?
One, one of those two. Um, it's gone now. It, it, the building has shifted enough and it's just been heartbreaking to see.
We're going to take it out, actually.
You think so?
And put it somewhere.
Yeah, well.
Nice.
Yeah.
If it can be salvaged.
Mummify it.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, it's, it's complex, but it's, yeah. It's, it's not, it's, it's workable.
Yeah.
Okay, so let us, 9:03.
Okey dokey.
Let's close the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay.